Going to call to order this meeting of the Select Board of Shaftesbury on Monday, January 6, 2025 at 6:00 PM in Cole Hall. I'm Naomi Miller, the Chair of the Shaftesbury Select Board. Is there a conflict of interest for anybody present?
Yeah.
Our primary object of tonight's meeting is a review of the proposed budget for fiscal year 2026. And Ms. Eichen is going to lead us through this.
Okay. So what?
Can you see, can you see the screen?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
What I'm going to do is share the screen because I have the budget worksheet. Before I do, what you will see and notice is that overall, the proposed budget proposes a 5.7% increase over 2025 due to three main things. One is the cost of health insurance that is skyrocketing, and we have a choice between two plans. One will go up 10%, and one will cause our costs to go up 24%. So we have a decision to make there. And eight of our employees take the health insurance. Cost of truck parts and fuel has increased roughly by 6% and a 5% leveling out, leveling out of increases for all employees, wage increases, cost of living across the board. So we'll kind of start there. Keep that in mind as we look at this.
And we should just interrupt her at any point.
At any point, if you have questions, if you want to be like, ooh.
Do we have anybody on Zoom but ourselves?
Uh-uh. Nope. They'll let me know if they chime in, and I'll make this this.
Because they should be able to ask questions at the end.
Right. I'm making it as big as I can.
Thank you.
Oh, beautiful.
Without being, hold on, I gotta scooch it over. Is that better? Can you guys hear?
That is 100% better.
Okay, so let's start. But I would like to remind everyone that the budget is a planning tool. We don't have crystal balls here at Cole Hall, if only. And this proposed budget is probably going to be less money than we'll have brought in in fiscal year 25. I've added and shaved and shaved and shaved and shaved, and then other things had to be added and shaved and shaved and shaved. Things come up, unexpected expenses. It is a planning tool, not something that's written in stone. Just that said. So we'll start at the beginning, and I've, what I've done is go, it's, I didn't have to reinvent the wheel because the previous town administrator had this great worksheet that was in sections. So I just kind of had a good template. So general government means administration. This is basically my office. You will notice that it went up, it will go up by 21%. This is due to a couple of things, and one of them is, let me go up a little bit.
Can I just interrupt for a second?
Yep.
Just to note that what Paula has done is to put at the bottom of each section, the percentage increase.
Yes. You'll notice that calculation is there.
In some cases, it's a, yeah. So it's a, we can see what areas have gone up and what areas have gone down or stayed level. Hello, Mike.
Hey, Mike. Perfect time. So 5% pay increases, yes, but the operations coordinator is a new position, but she still wears a few hats. So 75% of her salary will come under my administration budget. 25% you'll see later on in the spreadsheet under cemetery superintendent. However, she does not take the town's health insurance. So where I do, and the previous town administrator did not, we're kind of splitting even there, breaking even. So that is why it's going up 21% due to that. We're just moving some things around, and we had to insert her into the administrator budget.
But three quarters of that salary of hers is actually moved from another part of the budget.
That's right. That's right. She was in four parts. Now she's moving into two. So one is 75%, which is admin, and then the 25 will be cemetery. This used to say Cole Hall, but we changed it to municipal offices because, as most people should know by now, we're considering purchasing the medical building down the street. So I changed it to municipal offices, and I've put it up 19% basically because of the costs, the rising cost of heating fuel and preparation for the possible move. We're still, we're still getting together, you know, heating costs over there because it's propane. A lot of that initially, and the, you know, the paint and paper, if you will, will be taken care of by those ARPA funds. But hopefully, going into another transition year, it'll kind of even out what we're spending over there, and we'll put in energy saver everything's in the new building if that's what we are to do going forward. So just cushion, cushion it a little bit here, and that's why those are going up. Okay, we go to the town clerk. It's up 3%, not a lot, mostly from the 5% raise. And there was a correction here on part of her health insurance. She has a plan for a couple and was mistakenly only given 2,000 on her HSA. For the past two years, we've corrected it to the proper 4,000. So that 3%, not bad at all. Down to finance, this is accounting, payroll, bookkeeper, up 5% doing payroll in-house. We brought payroll in-house this year, which was a really, really, really good choice as far as employee morale and employee information. And they have someone to call to say, how many sick days do I have? How many vacation days do I have? No one really had that information before at their fingertips. So where you will see payroll over here, that was the company paid data that we were paying to do our payroll, it moved to zero because now the bookkeeper is doing it. And this is me bumping her up to 15 hours from eight to 10 hours. What else did I want to say about that? Yeah, it was just, that was one of the better decisions we made this year.
Yeah, and it sort of evened itself out in terms of money.
Yeah, it really, it really did.
It really cost us $500.
And just, you know, the DPW knowing, like, oh, just go call Tiffany. Like, she has the answers. She understands it, you know? They call me, I can figure it out. So that's what's going on there. The next ones I'll kind of blow by because they're 0%. Auditing, no change. Delinquent tax collection, no change. Treasure salary goes up 5%. Not really much else. That's really, I'm still trying to figure out why Excel is like, it's like a 5% raise, but it only goes up 3% because it's comparing these two numbers. And, you know, FICA and all that, that kind of goes up.
There's a couple of things that go down.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Assessors office, this is a rare, not a rare bird, of course, of a different color. I had a friend once who says, all my metaphors have to do with animals. Which I'm saying, did you grow up on a farm? Like, no. Because we have the reassessment going on, the reappraisal. So there's a 5% increase. We did a lot of adjusting, shaving things down where we could. They're up 8% due to contribution and retirement contribution. Remember, this is one of the employees that her hours went up, and it should have kicked in automatically to start our contributions to her retirement and her contributions to retirement, which is in the state of Vermont. It's called MEMRs. Now we have to budget it because she's supposed to get it, and we're caught up. And, yeah, that's all I wanted to say about that. She also has reappraisal funds, and I spoke to her today about, she just found out that any, anything she does above and beyond her 22 hours can be paid out of the reappraisal funds. So any kind of overtime that she would have, it's a different pocket of money that has nothing to do with the budget, which, keep that in mind, because she'll probably be putting in a lot of hours with the reappraisal, but it's covered by that pot of money.
Oh, that's great.
Which is good. And she just learned that a few weeks ago, I think, even though maybe I only remembered it a few weeks ago. Okay. Public safety, animal control, there's no change here. There's no change. It's pretty, you know, 5%, but other things have gone down. Our ACO has its own kennels, so that's why that went down, but we don't want to completely get rid of it.
Does that, is, in public safety also our constables, or is that in a different part? I just think about public.
That will be in law enforcement.
Got it. Okay, that makes total sense.
It does.
Just think, public safety and.
Yep, that's true.
Different uses.
Different uses.
Yep. So 0%, that's always good to see. Emergency management, it's down 43%. And I went kind of back and forth on all of this because I do think we need to prepare more for emergencies, but I believe there's a reserve fund, and there are a lot of grants we can get for emergency supplies, like ham radios and things. So I'm looking into those avenues because, first of all, we need to take inventory. What do we have and what don't we have? Equipment maintenance, I bumped up to 1,000 because this 800, if you remember, has to do with maintaining the generator at the school. But, you know, when they have to do maintenance on it, like, hey, a light's on or whatever, we get the bill for that, too. So $200 is a lot, but, you know, I've padded it a little bit. So, but it went way down. Because their operator supplies, we didn't spend anything the past three years. Traveling meetings, we didn't spend anything the last few years. So love that. Libraries are up 100%. Shocking, right? Because they didn't exist before on the budget. This is a case of us moving the libraries onto the budget from community appropriations, which will, of course, be voted on. And that's why it is up 100% because category didn't exist before.
And we will see it taken out of the community appropriations.
See it taken out of community appropriations. Do you have a question, Tony? You look.
No, I was going to say, so people need to know that it's in the budget and not.
Not a community appropriation. Yeah.
And it just allows, in case community appropriations get voted down or not, and these are essential services.
Libraries are very important.
To our, to our public and do a lot. So I think it's a good thing that we, just like we did for the rescue squads, moved it from kind of appropriations to, oh, this really is.
Probably needed as a priority.
Right, an essential.
They provide more services.
Reading and saving lives.
Reading saves lives, of course. Okay, on to the fire department. These men asked for nothing, so I gave them an extra 10 grand because they did ask for something. The second firehouse needs a new boiler, and it's 10 grand. So I put it in the budget. So they're up 13%, but see, it's just an even 10 grand on this bottom line here. Well deserved. Fire warden, not any change. Law enforcement, I still put zero in the constables even though we used them at the transfer station this summer. Overall, it didn't take us into the red. I don't think it will, but we're going to hope for the best, hope that we don't need them. But sheriff services, I think, is, I think that's worth an ongoing conversation because, and I made notes so I could remember.
They went up.
I have not raised the budget for Bennington County Sheriff, but their hourly rate will be going from 72.50 to $80 an hour, which is a huge jump. Sheriff Gully and I have spoken and agreed to do the usual, but also respond to circumstances as needed. We'll need to be creative as far as priorities and coverage goes, but this also means fewer hours.
That they're patrolling the roads.
That they're patrolling, and that's why the conversation should continue because it's, I have a feeling that people, rightfully so, would be like, well, we need, we need more. But keep in mind, we also have the state police who do a lot of patrolling.
Right.
So right now, I kept it at the 80. As you see, it jumped from 24 to 25, from 40 to 80. That was a big jump. It's worth discussion, further discussion.
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me the public should really weigh in on this. What do they feel about the balance between keeping the increase in our budget below 6% and keeping our level of law enforcement where it has come to be this year? And that's something we really need to hear from them about.
I think so, too. So I figured I would err on the side of, you know, not caution, but.
Yeah.
Be conservative with the number. The emergency medical, everything is the same with the rescue squads. Now we get into the highway department, which I calculated today is 38.7% of the budget. Down, well, they were 39%, so a little bit less. We did a little shaving there. So this is kind of a big piece of the pie. I'm going to go down to the percentage, though. Only up 6%, which, because we shaved. Sorry, Mike. The raises, of course, overtime. We zeroed out part-time summer because we can't seem to find part-time summer help. So you'll see in a few lines down, a few sections down, we moved it over into subcontractor because Mike's answer was to hire subcontractors for things like mowing and plowing, which makes sense because people are always help, you know, helping us out and happy to. But I'm like, you know what? Get rid of the part-time summer because it's, I don't know why it's hard to find that these days, but, okay. What else? Cost of living increases, health insurance costs. Health insurance costs is one of our biggest.
That's huge, 97 to 117.
Yep. And this is, this is the 10% number, not the 24%.
So it could be much worse.
It could be much worse.
And we have to discuss that. That's what we're going to address in our executive session.
Anything else interesting in here? Traveling meetings? Mike's like, yeah, I don't, I don't do those because.
They travel 70 miles.
So we got to remove that out because nothing has been spent. And then just kept the same with all the, they get a stipend for steel toe footwear, their CDL physicals are paid for, and they're, they get a clothing allowance because they go through.
Carthens.
Carthens and whatever they're called, like Wada.
It was really striking to me looking at this, like, it hadn't really come home to me until I was looking at this so carefully that there are six people working for the DPW full-time. I mean, that's an enormous piece of our budget just in itself, so.
And, you know, I don't know what other.
And they're great.
Yeah.
But it's a big.
Very lucky.
And we need to clear them that this is actually part of their compensation package that we.
Yeah.
It's part of the compensation. They, you know, they could buy me some work clothes, too. I'm kidding. All right, highway construction and maintenance, this is a big one, 13%. And that is due to moving the part-time summer wages, which were 10,000, and Mike asked for 30,000 because the mowing and our mower is getting tired, the, the piece of equipment, not the person who mows. And there's, there's a lot of subcontractor help needed, whether it's on a paving project or just maintaining the town so it's not overgrown.
So where did that money, because I'm looking, and it says zero on subcontractor costs. Where did, where was it coming from before? Other line items or?
I think this was like.
That was the part-time. It was under part-time.
Yeah, but there wasn't amount here, there wasn't, well, I put it amount here.
It says zero and zero for 24 and fiscal year 25. I'm like, why isn't there, why aren't there numbered? Because we've always used subcontractors or.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure.
That's funny, okay.
Yeah, that's a good question because.
Because I would be curious to see kind of what the difference is between those years.
And I, you know, that makes me want to look back in the book for these two years and see if anything was really there, but maybe they were being coded under something else, but I think this is a good idea.
I was wondering, yeah.
To give them some support. Signs went up a little bit. What else? Culverts.
Paying.
The DPW has quite a few culverts to fix, so he asked for culvert money and sidewalk construction maintenance because the sidewalks are needing attention. And he's like, Mike, tell me what you, what projects you need to do and go from there. What is the next one? Did I skip that one? Highway administration. Oh, these are the, well, the Tonka's, as we call them. The trucks, only up 5%, not bad. And the scoop is here, it went up, because this is a new truck, therefore doesn't need much in the way of maintenance, but it's a new, it's a new one.
Oh, no.
That's why there was nothing the previous years. And trucks three and four are being replaced. They're the two big ones. One is already ordered, and one will need to be replaced. So we put more into the maintenance of those. I asked Mike to go in and say, which trucks do you think are going to need more as far as maintenance? Again, it's all guesswork. He could have some brand-new thing totally explode on him, you know? I don't, I don't know. Again, there's no crystal ball here, but in some, some lines we went down, some lines were the same, some we went up. Gas, diesel, and oil, a little bit of a cushion there because that's only going to get more expensive. So not bad, 5% overall there. Highway garage actually went down 5% because, well, that was moved two years ago. Where did that go down? Oh, we could take professional services down a little bit. These are things like the cleaner, you know, the lady who cleans over there. Professional services would be like someone coming in and doing like an electrician or something. There's not a lot of, there's so much maintenance that they can do themselves, and they just weren't spending this. So I put it back down there. Solid waste facility, this is up 5% due to wage increases, and we put more into the Casella Services because, you know, we've talked about how expensive it is and nine grand a year to haul that stuff out of there, and then more pickups, and we got the new compactor, which we're renting, so we needed to throw a little bit more in there because we use every dime of that and we even go over usually. I could even put more in there. But overall, 5%, not bad.
Just to remind people that it costs $200,000 to run that.
We are in the red every year.
Right.
Let me publicly state.
Yeah.
This is something that really needs.
Yeah.
Conversation, and of course, the next year.
Yeah, and there's always, you know, there's a lot of drama that goes on over there, and that doesn't help. But it's nice that we have one. Streetlights, we're good. In fact, I was going to put Hawks Avenue down because that's a little, I could even get that down a little bit further, I think, but I felt comfortable leaving it as is. Parks and Rec, down 4%. Again, the professional services wasn't being used, so I bumped it back down to 3,000. There'll be, there'll be things going on over there. I got a grant to revamp the tennis courts. There are two pickleball courts in there, but now there will be four. There'll be a bench, there'll be a storage shed. That is a matching grant, 50/50, so it will have to be the grant and what's in the reserve fund. We have like eight grand a year that goes into the reserve fund. And I want to remind everyone that Parks and Recreation is run by the Recreation Committee, who should be thanked every day.
Yes, they do.
And the DPW, who does their best to clean it up, and volunteers. And their budget down 4% runs on Band-Aids and volunteers.
Okay, can I ask a question?
Yes.
What's happening with the dog park?
I went to the last Recreation Committee meeting, and they're talking about it more, and it's kind of a springtime thing. Because I think they know where they want it to go, but we have to figure out what we need for it, like fencing, a little bag stand, a bench, you know? It will happen, and it's just.
It's just, it's still in process.
It's still in process.
So people should know that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Cemetery expenditures went down 13%. This is mostly due to the Semifi maintenance. It doesn't, it doesn't cost this much, not even on a bad day. So we, we just kind of leveled it out at 3,000. And then also, you'll see up here, cemetery assistant, kept at zero. And then this is the other 25% of the operation coordinator's salary because she is still the superintendent of the cemeteries. Ba-ba-ba-ba, yeah. Yay, negative. Development Review Board and the Planning Commission, no change there. Stipends are the same. County taxes, County of Bennington, they seem to go up about 6% a year historically, so they went up 6%. Transferred to reserves, this went up 4%. There is a capital plan for the equipment, and we had to bump that up 10% because where, now the, the truck that they've ordered, or the truck that they're supposed to order is now more expensive, of course, than it was originally supposed to be. We have some catch-up to do. And then the fire truck, this is right on track, and bumped up five a year. We should find a way to pad that a little more, too, because that, there might be a little bit of a shortfall we have to figure out.
Yeah.
Joe was really surprised at the costs of that, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, and like, there's a, there's a, you know, schedule of payments, and one payment will be due next year for the, what do you, how do you say it? Chassis or chassis or?
Chassis.
Yeah. And then the rest of it will, will come, but it's purchased, and that is the price, like, at least we know. Where Mike's truck is like, oh, it's going to be a little more expensive. Everything else is where, kind of where it was. These are the, the debts, and it went up 22% basically because of the new Ford 550 truck, and that is a five-year loan. We've made the first payment already.
And that's a truck that's going to save us a lot of money.
Yeah, it's already making the plowing easier, as far as getting into little places and that. Community appropriations, they've gone down 41% because the libraries aren't in it anymore. The only entity that asked for more is the Park McCullough House. They came to the last or one of the last Select Board meetings. This is obviously to be voted on, and the libraries are NA in there.
And it's our decision about whether we want to propose that, right? They bring the proposal for an increase to the Select Board, and we decide whether we want to.
Well, the voters are the ones who decide on.
Well, they decide on the number we present them with.
Yeah, right.
But we decide whether to put the increase on there. So I just want to draw people's attention. Maybe we could have a brief discussion about whether we want to do that.
I am curious about the BCRC line. And so I think we usually pay, don't we pay a membership to be a part of that kind of county thing? And is that part of that? Or, because that, I don't feel like BCRC is usually in the community appropriations.
It would be in like my dues and subscriptions, but this was all, this was on this worksheet because I didn't create the worksheet.
But it was there with nothing, no number?
But it was there with nothing on it. So that's a good question. That might come out of that.
Because I don't ever remember voting when I do appropriations for BCRC. That's why I'm curious as to what.
Yeah.
Or maybe it was something in the long past, but then they then started to get.
It should be in the regular budget, Mike.
I would think, just because it's something you're.
It would end up in administration dues and subscriptions.
If that is indeed how much we pay to be a member. I don't, yeah.
I can definitely take that out and make sure it's somewhere else. If it's not a community appropriation, it's something you want to do.
That would explain why there's no numbers in the previous two years.
Right.
Because that seems like an essential service to our.
Yeah, not reinventing the wheel, it's just spreadsheet. So that's a good, that's a very good question, so I will.
But I want to hear what people think about Park McCullough.
I'm sorry.
I mean, libraries are not asking for an increase.
Will they?
Rescue.
The tiny ones.
Do we want to add this much to the Park McCullough? And why? I really don't, I don't live anywhere near there. I'm not familiar with it in the same way as possibly others are.
And I think overall, it's a small number for what they do over there.
Can you go back down again?
Okay, it's a local resource that people use, the mile-around walk, the grounds, so I know they're operating fairly tight.
And they also have the gardens now that they do.
There's like the theater and the pool thing.
Oh, yes, that's right.
Yeah, yeah.
And then they have the events, but some of them, some of them are community events, and I think some of them are member, like, only events. Because they have a cigar club, I think, and they also have the croquet club. But I think those are members-only events, potentially.
I thought they were open.
But I don't know that for certain, but I. But I don't know that for certain, but I, I know that there's, but they also do, I think, the Sundays with Sam Strube yoga classes and some other things. I'm trying to think what else I know or see.
I thought, I'm just playing devil's advocate here. I thought that the Mile Around Woods is supported by the Fund for North Bennington.
That's what I thought, too. I was going to say that.
Okay.
There's, and, you know, and Jen never talked about, in the library, they have a fund that they drew from. But I don't know whether they liquidated that fund in the renovation or, you know, McCullough left a large amount of money to the village of North Bennington.
Which I think got funneled into the fund for
Yeah, and they lighted up, yeah.
And then, because there are a lot of nonprofits in North Bennington, Park McCullough House being one of the
And nobody seems to be able to put their finger on the amount.
Oh.
We never, we never get an accounting, and it must be run by a board of trustees. It's got to be.
I would have
The Fund for North Bennington?
Yeah.
Yes, it is. I spoke to somebody the other day who was on it, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know whether it's secret or, you know, I don't
Permanent executive section?
Yeah, I'm not sure. But I, I agree. I thought that there was money from the McCullough Fund that financed the house, part of the house.
All right. That was super. You know that.
Maybe we could talk about it again next year? Just look whether they come back with another request?
Yeah, no one, they're the only ones who asked for more. The library said a little, a little bit more, but they talked about that when they came.
This is always the hard thing about community appropriations because they do go before the voters, and if they vote down any one of them, then they don't get that funding. And that's always the hard part about things of getting something versus trying to increase and then maybe getting it shot down, and then you end up with nothing. So that always worries me when I, you know, look at all of these incredible service organizations that are doing all sorts of work for our community and our youth and all sorts of other things that, yeah, it's hard to know, but.
All right, thanks.
I don't know.
To be talked about again, so.
Oh, Monty's?
Yeah, they finally
They finally came through.
They came through. They got in touch with
Remember Monty's?
She's good.
Yeah.
So down 41% because, you know, the libraries took them out of there. So fiscal year total up 5.7%, which is in line with most other towns. And the school district was even more. I think there were like eight or nine, something crazy like that. There are numbers down here that I will continue to work on as I gather figures from like the Grand List and this per 100,000 and, you know, kind of broaden the picture a little bit. I'll have those for next week. But this is the, this is a very interesting exercise to do this budget and seeing, ooh.
What year does the Grand List get finalized? Is that '28? Or what, or, it's reappraising right now, but then when is the final? Do we remember? They came and presented, but I can't
Oh.
Remember what year it is, just because, you know, as we are moving, and it really, truly is, I feel like, a real transition year. And the fact that it is under 6% with the level of inflation and lots of moving parts with kind of our community and, and potentially purchasing
Going into another transition year.
And needing to, you know, help try to mitigate things that we wouldn't have expected down in Coal Hall and in the basement as just, I think, a real testament to kind of everybody working very hard on this budget to try to keep costs as reined in as we could.
And we're in a, you know, Coal Hall is full of coupon clippers, believe me.
Yeah.
They're always getting the best deal, and this is cheaper this place, and, and, you know, we all run households, so.
Yeah.
I mean, this, this, the expenditures this year could have been so much higher if we hadn't had the cost-saving things that Jen did for us and that Paul has done, and it was just amazing, really.
Yeah, we're really looking at going forward and kind of thinking about things and, you know, maybe having high upfront costs right now, but saving down
Savings in the long run.
In the long run because of the
Like, one of the things we saved on was when we looked at the AT&amp;T bill, and I was like, do we have three cell phones? Like, I have a town cellphone, DPW foreman has one, and the water superintendent have, has one. But the water superintendents had gotten lost some time ago. Yet it was on the bill for, like, to the tune of like $200, like, it was
Suzanne again?
And the machinations we had to go through because the last town administrator, was the administrator on the count, he actually had to go to Rutland in person to the company Grand Poobah store and say, I am no longer the town administrator, it's Paula Ekin, and it was like months, and it took, it took longer than it should have, not because of him, but because of AT&amp;T. But that's like 200 and some odd dollars that were like, and then Jen negotiated the cell phones and then helped Joe Vatican do the same, and kind of cutting where we can. New phone system, but way better. Doing, doing what we can with unforeseen expenses like the trailer
Right, there's so many unforeseen things. It was a real transition here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I can stop sharing this, I think. Yes.
Any, any thoughts, questions?
Thoughts, questions, comments, concerns?
No, I think it's good work. I think you're right. The law enforcement piece is, that is, you know, the recent visits from the Twitchell Hill neighborhood, and that was on top of speeding concerns that we were already trying to address, so just want to make sure we still have enough coverage to address all those things, and it would be, after hearing the community concerns, and then it would be tough to cut the law enforcement budget just a couple weeks later, I think, is our answer to those concerns.
Exactly. And even within that $80,000, and I think it's 24 hours, the overnight shifts are like $180 an hour, $60 an hour, rather than, oh, $80 an hour looks pretty good compared to that when right now they're $72.50. So there's also that. So I kind of had said to him, you're going to know where the problems are before I do. He's going to get the phone calls before I do. So if something comes up, he, he said he would call me and say, hey, we're having a little blah, blah, blah around this street or whatever, and then make decisions there, like, okay, do an overnight shift, and I don't see other, another way to do it other than just kind of staying fluid with it and responding in real time as much as we can to things that come up.
Do we use like 16 hours some weeks? Like, you know, if there's some weeks where it's not using as much, we'd have?
We probably could, and I, I think I, my next step is to call over to the state police barracks and get a better understanding of what are they doing? You know, they're, I see them on the roads, and they're catching a lot of speeders, too, but they're closer to us as they're right up the street, so we have to be creative. And if that budget needs to go up, that's fine, but speeding, always.
Well, people have asked for more coverage.
Yeah.
I mean, just
Yes.
The budget itself
That's right.
Is that, yeah.
That's right.
People want more services.
Yep.
And they're going to have to pay for it.
And it's a bona fide request.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Maybe it'd be helpful to understand from them how, how many speeders they're catching in that extra, those extra hours.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and where.
Yeah.
Twitchell Hill. All the fun, all the fun roads, and they're all fun.
Well, I mean, like whether they're catching speeders on, on Bang Street and on Hawks Avenue where the complaints originally came from.
Mm-hmm.
That previous issue. Then we had to take the speeding sign away from Hawks Avenue and move it to Twitchell Hill.
Right.
Is it still there?
And maybe try to get grants to get more of those signs. That's also another thing we can do, try to get more of those to put them around town more, you know, as a deterrent, as much as a deterrent as they are.
There were two.
There were two. And they're, you know, they cost.
Yeah, so that would be my only question, I guess. I don't, you know, I don't know, you know, just, you know, saying, okay, now it's 40 hours. I don't know if they can really use that much time. You know, we have to figure out how much time do they really use, I guess. You know, just, I think putting a cart launch number out there might not really solve any problems if, if they don't have the coverage or if it's not the right time of day, or, so we could find a way to, you know, I guess, do what we need to do within the budget or with a slight increase rather than just a large increase that might not get used or might not be effective, I guess. I don't know, we can have like a
I think it would get used. I don't think it's any danger of like, we're not using that, you know.
So we use most of our 24 hours every week.
Oh, yes.
I think the stats would be important. It would be good to have.
Yeah. Send a report with every invoice.
Yeah.
So every invoice is like all pages.
Yeah.
Which is good.
And this, I mean, these numbers can be amended by the public
Right.
At town meeting, right? So, can they not?
Like line item amendments?
Line item amendments, yeah.
It's good to explain in the
Good.
Yeah.
Seems to me there was
Because they've done
A year when Lon McQuinta insisted on adding money to the
Yeah.
To the gravel.
Yeah, that can
And the stipends for us that
And then they just have, we just have to do the calculations and the math in the moment to then tell people what it's going up to.
It's a working document, you know? We meet again next week.
It's a shot in the dark.
It's a shot in the dark.
Everything's a guesstimate.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
We're talking 26.
I know.
Yeah.
Times a margin.
Yeah. So, I mean, anything can happen.
Oh, boy.
You're right, no, you're right.
No, it is very true.
Emergency service, our budget. I thought that was great. I mean, just, you don't know.
I don't know, but I'm also like
Yeah.
I wish I could beef it up because, oh my God.
Yeah.
You know, like, I want to form an emergency committee, emergency management committee, but also there, there's a lot of stuff we probably already have, so I want to inventory in the community and say, who has what? And, and all that. But that's a discussion for another time, I think.
Okay. I'm noting that it's 11 degrees outside according to that screen over there.
Oh, it's like Listen, there's no bad weather, there's just bad clothing.
Right.
That's right.
Very.
Bad earmuffs, yeah. There's no public for public comments.
No, no.
Unfortunately, maybe there'll be some next week. Any other business?
So going forward, just for kind of what comes after this? So this was our first kind of
Yeah.
Read-through, discussion, things like that. At the next meeting, there will be another opportunity for the public to have comments.
Thank you, yes.
And then it will be put into a warning for Town Meeting Day, which will go out, and people can
There's one more step before that.
Okay.
So next week, we're, we're going to have a second hearing like this and hopefully some public comment. And if that public comment or our discussion leads us to altering this budget, we have two days to do that because we have another meeting on that Wednesday to actually vote as a board for this. Yeah, so our, our meeting next Monday is actually, again, a hearing.
Yeah. And then it goes into the town warning, which will be in the
After Wednesday.
Yep.
After Wednesday, yep. Goes into
Where people can then
Warning, and then we'll get that to people, and they will get the town
Report.
Report. The annual report.
All right. Thank you for all your help on it.
Thank you for doing, teaching, doing an amazing job.
Yeah.
It'll be
It's going to be easier every year.
The next year, it's going to be in the turkey, within the oven, the turkey, and done earlier.
Okay, so review of action items. Don't really have any.
I'm looking at the BCRC
You're looking at the BCRC? And maybe, maybe if you get a chance to ask the sheriff for some stats on how our time is used?
Well, I think I can just look at the invoices and the, and the reports they send because it's like, how many hours, where they went.
Would it be under dues?
What's that?
Would it be dues?
BCRC?
For the base.
Yeah, I mean, I have a dues and subscriptions line item in my administrator budget, and probably should go there.
Yeah.
That'd be a more appropriate place for it.
Okay. That's it, really, with action items, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So now we're going to move into executive session and to discuss some personnel issues, and we probably will be coming out and taking a vote in not too long.
All right, we're going to pause recording.
Recording stopped.
And the video and the audio, not that anyone came to our budget party.
So, can I have a motion?
We'll make a motion that we use MVP as the insurance for our fiscal year 26 budget, which will increase our, our...
Decrease.
Right, it will decrease, thank you, our numbers and costs.
Well, MVP is, the costs will go up 10% instead of...
Instead of the 24, yeah, so that we are, we are saving money by using the MVP this year, or for fiscal year 26.
I'm sorry, it'll be increasing it by only 10%.
That's right. I was like, no.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5-0-0. Oh, 4-0-0, thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So 11, at least it's still 11 degrees, we haven't lost any ground.
Recording stopped.
That's crazy.